When you see them on the road.
Well, they would have to be.
Can we start? Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission. Could we all, oh, roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
BS.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Eliano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have, this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission's consideration, so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for December 9th, 2015.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Vote?
Gong.
Yes.
I guess not. I went pretty fast. I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
You have to jump up fast.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Please be patient with me. This is my first time, so I'll slow down.
In a while.
In a while, yes. Okay, with parcel map public hearings, action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items.
Wayne and I have asked that you pull the Embry Group as a separate item.
That would be tentative parcel map E.
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm going to forget how to do this.
Just say A. Let me say A. Tend to map number.
Okay, the A, tentative map parcel number PPM.
Yeah, I have to open the public hearing if anybody's here to speak on either of these.
On all of them.
On all of them, if anybody has.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing for tentative parcel map hearings. If anyone wants to speak. Now I can start with tentative parcel map number PPM 11-027.
I recommend closing the public hearing now and then go ahead and take.
Oh, we have somebody. Okay.
I don't know the procedures here. Yes.
Please come forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've never been here before. Yes, I'm the property owner directly to the.
Could you please state your name and address for us, please?
Three, three, excuse me?
Your name and address, please.
My name is Stephen R. Meyer, and I am the property owner on the parcel directly south of the site that's proposed for the parcel split.
Mr. Meyer, your address.
What is your address, sir?
Pardon me?
What is your address? Your home address?
My home address is 1330 Highland Drive, Porterville, California.
Thank you.
And which one, sir, are we talking about? We got four of them here before of us.
Are you speaking on the George Parius property?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's item A, PPM.
11027, the first one.
Okay.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Yes, my objection is the part, the property is already split into several home, or two home sites already, and they're asking to be split again. And this is an agricultural area, and my concern is that it's being split again. Now you're looking at a residential area becoming a residential area. And like I said, this has been farming for 100 years, and it just, it just bothers me that it's being split. So, that's my objection, and because I do the farming, I do the spraying, and now I have another home area to have to deal with. So, anyway, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this parcel map? Can I close the public hearing portion? I close the public hearing portion of the tentative parcel maps?
If you'd like staff to come up to talk on this one.
Even though that we don't usually.
Right, yeah. If you'd like to, she's prepared.
Thank you. April Hill is the contact person.
Good morning, Chairman Petriciano and Commissioners. The, Mr. Meyer is correct, the parcel was divided in 2007 from a into two 10-acre parcels, or close to 10-acre parcels. The applicant plans to, has an existing home here. There's the other parcel that was divided off is up here. They are, and belongs to a different person now. The applicant here is, will be entitled to build another house on parcel two. It's allowed by zoning. And.
April, the, in 2007, was that when it was?
Yes.
Was it an AE10 at that time?
Yes.
So they, the zoning allowed it by right?
Yes.
Basically. So that first split was, it's already was zoned for that.
Right.
So all we're doing here is, now is this going to be a home retention split, or just?
It's a home site on the two-acre parcel one. They're not allowed by condition of approval to have, divide out another home site for 10 years.
Right.
From either parcel.
Had this not been an AE10 originally, then it would have fallen under that, that, that limitation, right? Had it been divided before.
As they weren't doing a home site, they were just doing a straight two ag parcels home, uh, in 2007.
Well, when we do a split out of a parcel that's already at the minimum zoning site, then that limitation for 10 years falls.
Only for a home site, since I didn't have a home site on, I'm sorry, the other parcel is to the, is to the east. There was no home site proposed.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
That land.
Right, but basically, this is just a, this is a home, home retention split on the deal. Yeah, okay.
What is that, on lot eight? So that's just to the east of that, and it says subdivision?
That was the original land division, how, how all the parcels in that area were created, was from an old, old subdivision, minutes.
Okay, thank you, April. Are there any other questions?
One more question. In between those trees, were those removed, right? Go back to the one you were just on. The, right to the north of parcel one? Because that's all part of parcel two, right?
Right, yes. I'm not sure of the current circumstances, but I believe that they lost the irrigation water.
If you look at the aerial, you can see that the trees are very sporadic. So, at some point, either water was lost, or they stopped farming, or something that, that those trees have been let go, I guess. See, you can barely even see them on this. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Only that, you know, it is ag area, but it's, it's allowed, the home retention is allowed on the thing. Mr. Myers, it's not much, it's allowed by ordinance, so I don't have any issues with it.
We have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and, let's see where else are we, pertaining to construction and location of limited numbers of new small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 11-027.
I'll second it.
We have a vote?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion was approved. Now we have tentative parcel map number PPM 15-036, final site plan number PSR 15-005. Bill Fox and Neil Zerling, Land Surveyor Incorporated. Is there any, I don't have to open the public.
If, if there's no, I mean, you can, if, if someone is here to do that, but if not, you've already had the public hearing, open and close, no one spoke.
Is there any comments on this? Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion to categorically exempt, consistent with SEQA SEQA guidelines pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 15-036 and final site plan map 15-005.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have the vote, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, now we have tentative parcel map number PPM 15-038, KT 3700 LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, CH Robles and Associates Incorporated. Do we have anybody to comment on this? Thank you. Any comment from the commission?
I'll make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with the California SEQA guidelines and the SEQA guidelines pursuant to the Title 14 codes for pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM 15-038 and a waiver of the final map with one exception. What was that one exception?
Had to do with access to the parcel and not having to pave in farm road.
I still make my motion.
I'll second.
Can we have the vote, please?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, now we have tentative parcel map number PPM 15-032, Claudia Reese with Dennis Sherrill, Sherrill, Sherrill. Do we have any discussion on this? Okay, do we have anything from the Planning Commission?
Make that motion to approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environment Quality Act and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to a new construction or conversion of small structure, and approved tentative parcel map number PPM 15-032 with a final map required.
Second.
We have the vote?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Here, I'm in, excuse me.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
I have to recuse myself for this next. I have to recuse myself.
Okay, let, let me, okay, the, the next is tentative parcel map number PPM 15-034, Embry Asset Group Incorporated. Adam Ramirez, Embry Asset Group Incorporated is the representative. We are going to have a presentation on that.
I, I, I believe that the Commissioner wanted to pull it just simply to recuse himself. If you wish to have a presentation, we're prepared. If you don't, you can take action on the item. Just for the record, to note that Wayne Millies and Bill Whitlatch have left.
Yes, thank you.
I think because it deals with the group, this is the Embry Group, and we need a lot of information about that, since there are a lot of Dollar Generals, and I know it has to do with that, maybe the presentation would be good, then.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. My name is Andrew Pacheco. I'm with the Tulare County RMA Planning Division. This is a project that's pertaining to the Embry Group, and it's going to be dividing 129 acres, and we're going to create two parcels, as identified. One parcel will be 1.23 acres. The property is within the ag zone. Now, this is the explanation for the division of land within that agricultural zone. It does pertain, it does qualify at this time. This is the vicinity map. Now, these three parcels that you're seeing right there is actually one piece of property with three different APN numbers. The only difference is, is the ag preserve that this is located in, and also a portion of the properties within the urban development boundary of the Poplar Cotton Center community. Okay. Okay. It has been properly noticed in the newspaper with this deviceated Times Delta, and also people within 300 feet of the boundary were notified by mail as well. This is the aerial view. As you can see, the property is farmed as one big, large piece under, under one gentleman. The portion that's going to be divided up is located next to the corner where the utility location is at, the public utility, Poplar Public Utilities. And if I could get, okay, hold on. Which is this area right in here? And my cursor doesn't show it. Excuse me. This is a site plan. It's the overall view of the property. As you can look up in the upper right-hand corner, parcel one, which is the location of the property that's going to be divided, is an L-shaped parcel, which they will have access on Road 192 and also on Highway 190. Now, Caltrans has also requested a dedication of right-of-way of 30 feet along that roadway.
Along both, both roadways, or just the?
Caltrans has only requested it on Highway 190. Tulare County, excuse me, I should have said something. Tulare County has requested a dedication as well, and it's identified in the conditions of approval, and they do have conditions of approval for approach and so on.
And for, for their point, that's been designed into this project already, so fulfillment of that requirement.
Yes, Caltrans has put the design in there. If you can see up there at the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a small line that goes along the front edge there on the property side. Now, the zoning on the property is AE20, so nothing less than 20 acres can be divided. Even though the property is vacant, they did file for a notice of nonrenewal, since the property is within the ag preserve. The notice of nonrenewal was taken to the Board of Supervisors, and it was approved December 8th, so they have that portion there that's out of the ag preserve, so we can continue with this project. The zoning is still AE20. There are several projects with this property that are going on at this time, a zone change, a general plan amendment, and an ag preserve cancellation, which will bring the property into compliance. Once those are completed, then at that point in time, it would be good to go ahead and record, but prior to that, it's not recommended at this time.
Andrew, didn't, didn't we just recommend a zone change on that? Yes, yeah, just to clarify, I don't believe there's a general plan amendment because it's already designated as commercial in the Poplar's plan, and it's within the urban development boundary. As you look at the site, it is, is right up at the cor, just the corner. It's not actually at the corner, it's just a very small little speck on this. It'd be good to be able to zoom in on it, but it's, it's not on the corner because the utility district has a well site on the very corner. So it's set back a little bit from the corner. It doesn't have, it's, it's on Highway 90, or 190, but it will not have direct access. Access will be off of Avenue 192, I believe. Road. Whatever that, Road 192, I believe. So, so there will be curb and gutter and sidewalk along the highway, but there's no, there's no driveway, there's no access. They will be coming in off of, off of the side road. That way, there's no concerns with left-hand turns and things like that into the property. So it's, and, and again, so it's a large parcel, so that's why this is such a, a, a big span, but it's a very, it's only one point, whatever acre, right next to the corner. Then there's a gas station on the eastern side of that intersection as well, so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, that was the zoning?
I think the, the gas station's on the southern side of that, right? Across from 192.
It's on the eastern side of, of the Road 192. Is it 192? Is that correct?
Road 192.
192. It's on the east side of 192, and this will be on the west side.
Okay. This is a picture of the location right there, so that's the intersection. So, are you talking about the gas station?
This is looking north.
Yes.
So the gas station's right here.
To the, off, off to the right.
And so this is going to be on the left side, right?
Right. Okay. Now, this is a photo showing the site itself. Right now, it's planted in, in orchard, and that is the northeast corner of the property. Okay, if you look and you see the orchard, that's where the leg is going to go for the driveway approach to Road 192, 92.
Is that, was, back, is that the well site there?
That is the well site for the Poplar Public Utility District.
So that's going to be set back, then, behind that well site, and this?
That is correct.
And I assume they will, they, they will hide that or secure it somehow, keep it from getting run over?
Well, access is not going to be across the well site. They have a driveway that will be going across the well site. From the well site.
But it might be a shortcut.
It might be a shortcut, but I, with most of these companies, I believe they would put concrete curb and gutter, you know, blacktop driveway.
That doesn't stop them in three rivers. We've had so many of them.
Another obstacle to come over. Okay. This is a line used across the street, and as you see, it's residential. So the commercial is on to the south, and residential is to the north of Highway 190. This is the intersection. Now, the intersection shows the two corners being commercial, as you can see. And this would be the southwest corner, so it would also be commercial. The well site is also designated commercial, too, and it's zoning as C2.
It's actually, all three corners are commercial.
This is the last corner, right? That's not, okay.
This is Road 192, and that's where the driveway would be along the south side of the utility district area, property. So, right where you see the road, excuse me, what happened here? There we go. So, right there is where the access point would be for the Dollar General store, what they're proposing at this time.
They're going to have to remove any trees?
Yes, they will. They are going to remove all those trees on the property in order to create the store.
You mean by all of them, all of?
All 20 acres?
Not 20 acres, no, just the property on parcel one.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, on parcel one, only parcel one.
So it's probably just a few rows of trees, then?
Right. Now, the rest of the property will remain in agriculture, it will remain zoned AE20. Just that area will be changed. Okay, this is a gap map that shows identification for the property as designated by agricultural, crop lands and pastures. The orchards is a purple area. Okay. There are no species of concern, so there's nothing there that has been found or recorded identifying any sensitive areas. And this is a recommendation to approve the categorical exemption pertaining to SEQA and the guidelines pursuant to Title 14 Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to limited numbers of new and small ore structures, conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 15-034, or the alternates, which you can go ahead and do, move to approve the, subject to modifications through additions or deletions of the conditions as discussed, move to deny, and direct staff to repair the findings for denial, to be brought back at a subsequent meeting, or refer back to staff for further study and report. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Just for clarification, this is allowed because it is in the Poplar plan, right?
Yes. Again, we did a, a zone change because of, of the AE zoning. However, it's within the urban development boundary of Poplar. It's part of the community plan, and the land use designation, although it's zoned for agriculture, is designated in the plan as commercial. So therefore, this is just, at the appropriate time, you can rezone, and because, again, on all, three of the four corners are already commercial, it, it's appropriate at this time to look at rezoning and allow this project to move forward.
Thank you. Any comments from?
Unless the applicant would like to make a comment.
Oh, do we have the applicant here, and would they like to make a comment? Oh, I have to open the public hearing back? Oh, no, we'd love to hear from you if you have something to say. Okay, then I won't open the public hearing back up. Is there any comment from the Planning Commission?
No comments. I'll, I'll make the motion that we categorically approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA SEQA guidelines pertaining to the new construction and conversion of small structures and to conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 15-041 and waiver of a final map.
Excuse me, but I think it's 15-034.
Am I on the wrong one?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, guys. I got a fee mistake.
This one has a requirement of final.
For the record, it's PPM 15-034.
I, I said, I've forgotten my glasses, and so that, that's what's happening.
Our chair already has shaken off the rust.
Let me amend that last approval. Okay, now, this is 15-034, right?
Okay.
Just, I make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA pertaining to limited number and, and new, of new small facilities or structures and conditionally approved tentative map number PPM 15-034 with the requirement of a final map on this one. Thank?
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm not going to do any more, because I can't see them, so.
The vote, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Eliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved. They're back.
I wanted to make a, a comment about this matter. We have another motion on this? Okay.
Yeah.
I wrote, when we had a, we were being considered in three hours to have a Dollar General. So I wrote an article on that, and I think I talked to, to Michael, and Michael told me that, you know, there were 10 in the county that he was aware of, and so since then, I've been kind of looking around, and there are 10 in the unincorporated area of the county, and this Poplar Cotton, I think, is really an appropriate situation, for one. But my reservation on this is, they're also within all the incorporated. But my reservation on this is, they're also within all the incorporated cities. And I'm wondering, do we have any kind of capacity on how many of these are appropriate for Tulare County? I mean, they're, everywhere you go, you're seeing them, and even two of the different dollar kind of companies are in all the cities. So I see them in Visalia, I see them in Exeter, I see them in Woodlake, and I'm just wondering, has planning staff considered anything like that, or?
Well, first of all, for the cities, that's not our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
These are business decisions by businesses that have professionals that look at their market, and they do feasibility studies and analyze the situation, because they're in business, if there's demand for them, to go in and make a dollar at it. If there weren't, if there's oversaturation, they wouldn't. There's been decisions made early on, and I can't directly speak for Dollar General, but when we, we really worked hard with them as far as opening the first one in the unincorporated area in early March. And it was like, it was like, well, is there capacity? Yes, they did fantastic, and that store is doing outstanding. Earlier on, they were concerned that if they tried to open one in Pixley or Tipton, that it would be too close for each other, they draw against each other, but they haven't found that to be the case at this point. So that's why some of these communities, so many communities are getting them. And again, you're correct in that this is a fantastic boom to the local community. It provides quality merchandise that is stocked on a regular basis, freshly stocked, and getting the service of a large company in a smaller community, so they're not having to go drive ten, fifteen miles to be able to pick up a loaf of bread and toilet paper or paper towels or something. They can get that, they can actually walk to get it. So it's very, I know that there's a number of them out there, and certain communities have different opinions on them, but certainly for the rural valley unincorporated areas, they've, all of the communities have totally embraced these.
You could say the same thing about a seven eleven, you could say the same thing about a subway, about a gas station, Arco. I don't think you can legislate on supply and demand.
Well, no, it's true.
From a legislative perspective.
We've discussed it at public meetings in Three Rivers, and a lot of the people are, you know, the people that do own stores and have some of those same products on the shelves in their stores now, let's say in Three Rivers, for instance. And I, as business people, they're really quite worried that they can't compete against this kind of volume and large business. And I know it's the same problem when a Walmart comes in or something like that. And I think it's, a case-by-case basis, it's really important, because in some of these communities, they simply have none of those products, and I totally realize that. But I'm just wondering if we're looking at other kinds of impacts that this may cause to one of the good things about living in a small town, so, just a thought to throw out there. And I'm certainly open to supporting new business, and if it's something that's going to work and save people money, I'm sure it can be popular with a certain amount of people.
I would, I would just like, there is another Dollar General project that will be coming, tentatively scheduled for the end of February for the planning commission to consider, and that is near Springville. And just yesterday, we had Dollar General and Army staff meeting with the homeowners association at the River Island Country Club, or the homeowners association, rather, and to discuss what concerns they have, what they, and from preliminarily, there's people there that are a hundred percent supportive, a hundred percent opposed, and in between, so you get that everywhere. But the company has reached out to talk with them early on, rather than having it happen at a podium, and really try to get, do the give and take, and hear their concerns, and make some revisions that are, that's financially feasible to do and accommodate, to try to mitigate those concerns in the development and the design of the project. And I would say the most of the people there support having it there, it's just their concerns about lighting and some other things that are their major concerns. Community character, I'd say, you know, that type of, they'd like something that fits with the character of the community to a sense of place, which is more prevalent in certain communities than others. Some communities are very concerned with that, other communities really don't care, they just want the building and they want it there. So Dollar General has been very open to talking with neighbors and the areas. So I know, we kind of jumped, we don't know how or what, why there was an inquiry about the Dollar General in Three Rivers at this point. They are looking throughout all areas, so, and they've already indicated that if they should choose or see some site that they're interested in Three Rivers, they will certainly meet with the groups and discuss concerns or issues.
Well, I liked your suggestion on that, too, that you said maybe they could take a building and recycle it, you know, something that was already there, and that plays a lot better in Three Rivers than new construction.
I know in Visalia, there's one behind the In-N-Out that was an existing building that they took over and redone.
We don't have a lot to choose from in Three Rivers, but we do have some. So, just a thought I wanted to throw out there.
Hey, you know, putting my social hat on, most of these communities, including Springville, you know, Three Rivers is unique because they have a lot of high-income people who live there, but a lot of these people, the only way they get to where they're going to go is walk, and this gives you affordable milk and eggs and meat. You know, they're not going to go to the gourmet market for the best cuts, because they're just barely getting by paycheck to paycheck, and so, you know, they provide, what the seven eleven used to, for quick pickup, they provide for the, I think, the working people in the community. And so, you know, these are, they work well, they're clean, they have a good turnover of product, and, you know, and especially popular at, people walk there, you know? Not everybody has a car.
I think that would, I think, Bill, you just hit it on the head, that'd be an excellent mitigation measure. Make Three Rivers walkable. And we could walk to it.
Most of the people I know in Three Rivers, they have deep pockets, so.
I know, they have people go shop for them.
They have people go shop for them.
Okay. Thank you for your comment.
And they shop there, too.
Don't quote him on that, please.
Well, thanks for listening.
Is there any other discussion from the planning commission?
We're done.
Do we have a motion?
I've already done that.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did.
We're done.
We're done. That's, thank you. Okay. We are, public hearing for a special use permit number PSP one five dash zero four nine, and a tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero four one. Jose Alonso Lago Vazquez, and with Neil Zerling, land surveyor, and Dana Metlin is presenting. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Taliano. Missioners, the project before you is a special use permit to allow an agricultural service establishment and to allow the division of property resulting in less than forty acres in the AE forty zone for the purpose of establishing a new agricultural service establishment, and a tentative parcel map to create the parcel containing less than forty acres. Lago is moving his existing research facility from the College of Sequoias in Tulare, this new location that will better serve his needs. The CEQA finding for this special use permit is a general rule exemption. The activity is covered by the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect, the activity is not subject to CEQA. And the use of Section one five zero six one B three is applicable and appropriate because the initial study that was prepared for the project demonstrated that there would not be a significant effect on the environment. The CEQA finding for the tentative map is a categorical exemption, consistent with CEQA Section one five three zero three, Class three, and this is appropriate for this project because the proposed structure is less than ten thousand square feet for parcel one, and no structures are proposed for parcel two. Entitlement is found in Section nine dot seventy dot thirty-five under use permits, which allows agricultural service establishments primarily engaged in performing agricultural services to farmers, so on, and also Section nine dot seventy dot thirty-three dot B under use permits, which allows the divisions of land resulting in parcels containing less than forty acres for the purpose of establishing new agricultural-related industries or services in accordance with all applicable zoning regulations. And the project is located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan, the land use element designation is Valley Agriculture, and the project is consistent with the applicable Tulare County general plan policies. There's fifteen of them. Project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments regarding the project. Site is located on the north side of Avenue one seventy-six, between Road one twelve and State Highway ninety-nine. The facility would be located on the north, five point eight five acres of the existing ten-acre site, which is just north of the Caltrans northbound rest stop and south of Project is located in the AE forty zone. All the properties surrounding this site are zoned AE forty, and they contain row crops and dairies. To the west, of course, is SR ninety-nine, and to the south is that Caltrans rest stop. The parcel is under Williamson Act contract, and it does conform to the principles of compatibility set forth in Government's Code Section five one two three eight dot one. Patchment to staff report for that. Aerial view of the site.
Haven't I seen that area flood in the past?
Have you seen what?
Nancy, I don't know better than me. Doesn't that, that's right there by the rest stop.
I know where it is. I don't recall it flooding there.
Maybe south of it a little bit.
I think, I think where you're thinking, yes, that's where the river is, yes.
Okay, I'm just, what I'm thinking is just a little south of that for the river crossing.
It is in flood zone X or, and they will have to elevate-
That's the river right there.
It's an A, it is an A.
Just for the record, it is in flood zone A, they will have an engineered certified pad, and this whole site has been thoroughly reviewed by Public Works Department for verification that everything will be built accordingly.
So there's a specific lift on the pad or something like that?
Yes.
It's also important to the client, because I looked around for a property for it that's close to the UC Davis, isn't it? The-
It's very close.
Is it?
South of it, about.
Just south. Okay, I opened the public hearing, is there any comments, or would the applicant like to comment?
Would you like me to finish the staff presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry, I thought you were finished, Dana.
Got interrupted, couldn't finish.
Okay, please go ahead.
I mean, I don't have to. As mentioned, there are two requests pertaining to the special use permit. One is to allow the division of the less than forty acres into parcels that are less than forty acres, and that is for the purpose of the ag service establishment. And the second request is the ag service research facility, and that would occur on the northern five acres of the parcel division. That's a better view of the site plan. The Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board offered comments that were incorporated into the conditions of approval, and the Tulare Mosquito Abatement District also offered comments that were incorporated into the conditions of approval. And as mentioned, we're also going to be, hopefully, approving, recommending approval for the tentative map. The original parcel is ten point three five acres, and parcel one will be five point eight five, and parcel two will be five point eight five, and as mentioned, this is just east of SR ninety-nine, and north of Avenue one seventy-six. And staff's recommendation is to first approve the general rule exemption and the special use permit number PSP fifteen dash zero four nine, and then after that, we can, hopefully, approve the categorical exemption and the tentative parcel map number PPM fifteen dash zero four one, and the waiver of the final map.
Thank you.
And that concludes staff's review.
Thank you. Now, do we have, the applicant would like to say something? Thank you. Please, yes, and state your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Jose Alfonso Lago Vazquez, I go by Alfonso Lago. My address is eighteen fourteen Rothschild Street in Tulare. First of all, I would like to appreciate your time and effort to review this project, and look forward to the approval. And also, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Mike Waschong, Eter Herrera, and Mr. Aaron Block. When I was introduced first, a few months ago, probably six months ago, by Mr. Lynn Dresch, Frontal Ray, to Mr. Mike Waschong, and at the time, I was looking for properties. Then he and his team, Mrs. Martinez, they helped me a lot in terms of knowing if I was looking for the right location, if there were chances for it, to build what I needed to build. And then he introduced me to the rest of the team, and Aaron Block, Dana Martin, were extremely helpful. Then, I think that is the reason why this county is growing and why the United States is growing. I'm originally from Europe, from Spain, came back to the United States end of two thousand and one. I graduated there from better school, was working there for a few years, came here, did my residency, which is a specialization program in Wisconsin, my PhD in Minnesota, came to Tulare, worked as director of technical services for a company, and then started my own business, all right. I am the president and owner of Dairy Experts. Dairy Experts is a contract research and laboratory firm, everything related to dairy, animal health, or I should say, dairy cattle health and production. We start three years and a half ago, as a contract research business and consulting company, and our laboratory started two years ago. We are based at the College of the Sequoias. Then, over there, we rent laboratory space for our laboratory, and we also house animals there when we have intensive studies. I hire people, students, I have, from the College of the Sequoias, up to fifteen students per project, other projects, that will be the maximum, other projects will have two, other projects will have five, and then other people work in the laboratory and supporting me with analytical services. Then, in addition to the laboratory and research there, we also conduct research, contract research with, in commercial dairy farms. There is a need to grow now for the company. We are going to need to spend not just our laboratories, but also our research capabilities in terms of housing animals for research purposes. And that is why we are moving out of the College of the Sequoias. I think there is also plans to use those facilities for other uses, intended uses from the College of the Sequoias. My business in general, I think, is benefiting the community, is benefiting dairy farmers. I think, even we are the number one country in the United States and in the world in terms of number of cows, most of the research that we get is coming from Cornell, New York, is coming from Wisconsin, is coming from Minnesota. That is, that is the reality. I think we have a need for innovation on animal health and production here in this country. I think, then, I think that benefits farmers and benefits the economy in general, and I think fits well with the number one product of this country. And I think our relationship working with students has been useful, I think, has been very- very, I think gave them opportunity to work with cows, to do research and to get paid for it. Some of these students, they, I cannot say that it was because of us, but we, we wrote letters of recommendations, they did internships at Mayo Clinic at NASA and there have been at least in three of these students, achieved in career goals. Now they are moving to epidemiology, microbiology type of career instead of what they were thinking. Thank you.
Mr. Lago, can I ask, will you still be employing College of the Sequoias students?
Yes, I look, I look forward to continue that, yes. I think has been a very beneficial for both ends. For me to meet the, the best people early on, not all of them are the best, right?
Right.
But when you go through, through a pool of people, you, you get with, with outstanding people. And there are names, Sinseja Tobar, Jessica Pantoja, there are people out there that is outstanding, really outstanding and that, that people keeps you going, then I want to, I want to keep going for a while, then I need those people.
Thank you, it sounds like you did partnership.
We probably would have met you about ten years ago had they located UC Merced south of Tulare like they once were considering. And I just wanted to ask you, in general, what, what kind of research, what's a little more specific kind of research that you're doing there?
Yes, the, the research, let's divide the research, the research we do, we are going to do at this facility, we currently do at the College of the Sequoias, measure the research we do in commercial dairy farms. The research we do in commercial dairy farms are products that could be treatments, could be preventive drugs that has, most of them are already in the market, we just need studies with larger number of animals to know the efficacy and cost benefit of those. Because efficacy, you need to approve a product, not necessarily is the efficacy you need for that product to be cost beneficial. You know, most of the times when we approve a drug, we are focused on safety, but efficacy is, is also considered, right? But there is no any cost benefit equation there or formula or analysis there. The research we do in our facilities is more product development, is more intensive research than, as an example, we have to, we, we did a project a few months ago and we're starting next week another project where we have fertilated cows. Then we open a window in the rooming of the, in the valley of the cow and we can take feed samples, then we can monitor all the digestion process and we are able to categorize well all the genomics, not, I should, I should say meta genomics of the rooming population. Then it's more intensive research, more related to product development type of research. Most of our research is related to mastitis, which is inflammation of the mammary gland and calf health and we are spending now or to, to nutrition research. Yesterday, actually yesterday, I, I was extremely happy because, because I think this is the future. A farmer from here, you always mention about those things to farmers, but they, they really, you know, they have to see something before they, they, they really grasp it. Then Casey Young from El Horn Ready, he, he said, we want to put additional row of fangs in Auburn to, to know if additional cooling, here they already have a very, very standard cooling system, cooling, cooling the cows in the summertime. As you know, cows suffer heat stress during the summertime and that impairs health and production. Then he said, I know you do studies, you, you did the studies in our dairy with, because those studies, I should say, they are sponsored by companies, pharmaceutical companies, Soetis, Merck, nutrition companies, et cetera, et cetera. And he said, could you do a study in our dairy? Then I think that is, that, that is really what is going to have an impact on farms. Here farms spend millions of dollars in acquiring new products or implementing new management decisions. We are really talking about millions of dollars on these very large days. I think before you acquire something, I think it's worth to do a study that may cost you fifty thousand dollars when you are going to spend four million, right? If that is efficacious or not, then I think that area is going to bring, as that area of research spans, I think is going to bring additional economical profitability to those dairy farms. That answer your question?
Yes, and to me, it sounds like you're on the cutting edge and we should really support this.
Yes, I think there is a lack of, there is a need for innovation and there is a, I think we, agriculture has, we have science and agriculture and that's, it makes sense, right? Because I see science students that want to go with agriculture and they don't see the connection of science, they don't see the, why biochemistry, why those things can help them. I think by doing research, they are kind of merging both of, of those things, right?
I know at the, at the Ag Expo, you know, I noticed a lot of the innovation is coming from elsewhere. There is some here in Tulare County, but it sounds like you can help, you know, contribute to that and make some more of that right here at home.
We are looking forward to it, yes.
So, much of what you do is the FDA research for the, for the pharmaceuticals on, on drugs that they would like to market, is that?
Some of it, yes.
Okay, that, prior to that, that was, that's been done at the universities, is that right?
Not, not many times, not many times, sometimes.
Is that right? I did my research at Cal Poly, but that was forty years ago.
Yeah, at the universities, yes, I think that we are seeing now in veterinary medicine what you saw a few years ago in, in human medicine. A lot of the research done in human medicine is done by counter research organizations as of right now. The thing is with universities, in terms of product development, there is a lot of, companies are afraid of losing the rights on the product because then the university can claim some of the rights of that product.
Interesting.
There you go.
Also.
I missed my chance.
What most of the research truly is done by university right now is marketing research because companies, marketing research is research, I, I, the word marketing doesn't disqualify that research, but is evaluating products that already have been on the market, et cetera, et cetera. Like the research I told you, we do in commercial dairy farms because, you know, we still have a value in the name of the university in that paper. Then, yes, then, not, not necessarily has been a university being involved in the, in the research before we do.
This is interesting to me because I did my master's thesis on the, the FDA research for Oxfendazole, which was a worming compound, it's probably not used anymore, but at Cal Poly at San Luis Obispo.
Yes. Yes.
Well, thanks for your information.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
This morning on the news, they were interviewing a scientist that they're now doing genetic research on animals to grow human organs and that is something that's pretty, pretty revolutionary, evolutionary, so animals are quite valuable.
Some of the research, I, I think you see an interest in the research, some of the research we do, like our laboratory, work seven days a week and this is not research, this is laboratory service. I think the use of antibiotics is under scrutiny, right? As it should be. Then with our laboratory, we offer services seven days a week. Farmers get results next day and all the mastitis doesn't need to be treated with antibiotics. Then by taking treatment decisions based on, on culture results, they are able to save, to reduce antibiotic use for the treated one mastitis, to reduce it to thirty percent, which is about, at the farm level, is about fifty percent. Then I think that has an impact on economics, that has an impact in public health and so in additional, we are looking also to waste two other alternatives to antibiotics on, on, on treating mastitis. Then I think, yes, that I think that goes well with those type of innovation that we try to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zerling, do you have a comment to make?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Neil Zerling, licensed land surveyor, twenty-nine oh eight B West Main Street. And I just wanted to speak to the parcel map portion of this application, just for a few moments if I, if I could. Again, I appreciate very much the work of staff on this, in moving this particular project along very quickly. I want to address just actually one condition, but it does pop up in both the use permit application and the tentative parcel map application. And that pertains to a condition for Caltrans. On my staff report, it is page fifteen, it's condition number twenty-six and then also in the parcel map portion, on page twenty-five of the staff report, condition number three. And this is a request by Caltrans for an irrevocable offer of twenty-five feet of right of way along State Route, along the east side of State Route ninety-nine, along the subject property. And this is to facilitate widening, they say, of, of their route in approximately the year two thousand and thirty-eight. I would respectfully request that this condition be removed from both of these projects at this time. I cannot come up with any nexus or connection between our project as submitted and the need to widen State Route ninety-nine in the year two thousand and thirty-eight. In addition to my knowledge, Caltrans has no plans and they cannot document that in fact twenty-five feet of right of way is going to be needed in this particular location. So I believe it is an inappropriate condition. If you take Caltrans' position, any one of us that drives south on State Route ninety-nine through this area requires the widening of, of that route. So, any one of us that would submit a building permit application or any kind of development application could have the same condition placed on our project and again, I think it is grossly inappropriate at this time. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have and again, I appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Neil, is there a problem with them not building in that area? The state would still retain the right, but they wouldn't build in this so-called, what I'm ninety-five projections to widen ninety-nine? So in other words, you're not giving it to them, but you would agree not to put your building in that, in that area?
No, I, I think a informational note that obviously State Route ninety-nine may be widened in the future is appropriate, but at this point in time, we do not consider the offer of dedication to be appropriate.
But that's not a problem, not putting your buildings into that?
No, we're not designing anything within that location.
Put it in the, in the use permit that, that you would keep a certain distance back from that area?
Yes, and the design has been submitted, Bill, and that's available to you. You can see that we, that that, any.
I agree with that.
Any permanent improvements have not been placed in that area.
Way too far in the future for me, so.
For all I know, they may reroute State Highway ninety-nine to a completely new location.
They do that.
Or the widening may go all on the west side. We have no idea what's going to happen at this time and to require an offer and to encumber the property is not appropriate.
I would, I would just like to say two, two comments.
Number one is that, that this widening, this width is part of the regional, TCAG's regional transportation plan, so it's an adopted county plan for the, for that width. Secondly is if we were to choose not to do this, this might endanger the categorical exemption of the, of that, puts the whole project at risk. So I would recommend, staff's recommendation would be to, to maintain that, but at your discretion.
Can you explain the second half of that? My response, my response to that is that in order to require a dedication such as this, there has to be shown a connection from the project to the requirement for the condition and that connection cannot be made in this case. There is no way that this project would, would generate the traffic necessary to widen State Route ninety-nine.
Could Caltrans ask for like a mitigated deck or a EIR or something?
They, they, well, here, first of all, this is, this is in accordance with TCAG's adopted RTP, the width of this. So it's, so it's already an adopted standard and, and I, and I appreciate Neil's idea and opinion regarding, regarding that this, that this is a standard thing as we move forward, as we do development opportunities so that in the future, when, when the project does come along, we don't have problems and issues and, and all that. So, and I don't know whether Alfonso, whether, whether he's speaking for Alfonso on this or, or, or not. So I, you know, if Alfonso's okay with, with, with the, the right of way, because it's his land, his property, I, I don't know.
Well, Neil, you, I mean, you make perfect sense and we know Caltrans often doesn't, but we got to be careful what we wish for here, it sounds like, because we might open a can of worms for that whole area to.
Well, excuse me, did, are they asking for that for everyone that's developing?
As new, as new development comes through, when there's, when there's discretionary projects approval, when it comes to decision-making boards, they'll, they'll be doing this, they'll be asking that because it's, it's in the best interest to plan forward for what's coming down, yes, albeit way in the future, to, to do that for the future planning purposes. So that now, you know, ten years or twenty years or thirty years down the road, when the, when the widening project comes along, they're not having to go to eminent domain and start dealing with every property owner trying to take property or trying to remove, now they've designed the project so it's outside of that in case, but other projects may, may build into it and then, then, then there's issues with buildings.
The only problem with this is, is I'm the alternate on TCAG is, is I know a lot of those parcels along ninety-nine and if we do this, then I think we've opened up the door for a government taking, because you make the land no more, no longer usable or buildable. It's in agriculture, it's not a problem, but there's a lot of narrow pieces along ninety-nine and I don't want to slow their project down, but the whole thing bothers me because now you've made it not usable for future development. Now if it's zoned agriculture, then I suppose we're just taking agricultural land out of production, but I know this whole thing, I've, I've read extensively on takings, you know, and Beverly Cates and I used to go around a little bit on this, but you know, what's the guy's name, Daniel, he's the big book on the lawyer for planning, he has a whole section on takings.
Daniel Curtin.
Curtin. So it's kind of interesting, it seems like by doing that, we've created the government taking of the land because it no longer can be used for basing. taking of the land, because it no longer can be used for basically anything.
Well, it seems-
We have a law professor here that could probably answer that, Aaron, huh?
I'm not a law professor, as far as the taking.
But you were.
Not law. But the, to Mike's point here, it's probably sooner than 2038 that they would be expanding the freeway through this location. The traffic studies along 99 corridor do indicate that they will exceed somewhere in the 50,000 annual average daily trips, which eventually will lead them to make six lanes throughout this whole corridor. The 2003 Caltrans concept plan shows ultimately that this is an eight-lane freeway, okay? So it might be some time before we get there. To Mike's point, and Neil could argue this, that there is no nexus. I think RTP, especially since the RTP is now tied to the SES, which is Sustainable Community Strategy, which would, is how we deal with greenhouse gases. And with that is the ease of the flow of traffic. So that's ultimately what TCAG is looking for here, is the ease of the flow of traffic. And, you know, if it's only 25 feet, and it's not going to impact the buildable area of this project, the impact to the project itself is very de minimis, compared to the government need having the free flow of traffic. So, I mean, we're not going to go to the Supreme Court on this, as far as nexus or-
We may.
We may. And we appreciate Neil's opinion.
We might need to.
And we wish, we might have had more time to discuss this with Caltrans, because in some instances, they do ask for a lot, but they're only asking for 25 feet of, what's the setback distance here, Neil?
You know, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Mr. Bach, but that's a typical response, it's only 25 feet, but it's not your ground. And 25 feet along this stretch is considerable square footage. And it's a considerable-
Just real fast, Dan, what's the setback distance between the first portion of the building? 25 feet? No, for right here. Is that 25?
The backside plan from the ceiling.
There's a drainage facility-
Drainage facility within there.
Designed in that area. Yes.
I don't see how we can know-
But again, there's no nexus, there's no connection of this project to any widening to State Route 99. In fact, this project has no access to State Route 99, there's no direct access rights to the highway. They get on and off the highway, just as each one of us will, they'll have to use the on-ramp. So there's no direct tie for a widening of Project 99, whether it's in 2038 or sooner. There's just no connection. You can't connect a requirement for widening based on a research facility for dairy.
What is the impact, I'm not clear, what's the impact on eliminating these statements? I'm confused a little bit here. So we take this out, and Caltrans comes along in 15 years, what do they have to do?
They have to go through their normal right-of-way acquisition procedure.
Do they do eminent domain?
It's not eminent domain, no.
Do they negotiate with the landowner?
They negotiate with the landowner, fair market value for the price of the land that they would be taking for their right-of-way.
All right, what's wrong with that?
What did TCAG say about that?
No, no, let me ask, we're here.
Well, TCAG has it in that right-of-way, that width, in their regional plan. It's already designated.
But they'd have to negotiate, Caltrans.
If they do not have the offer of dedication, they would have to negotiate that.
Is that bad?
The offer of dedication gives away the property owner's right to negotiate the dedication.
Just leaving it in.
No, taking that.
Leaving it in.
Leaving it in, takes away the property owner's right.
But taking it out, there's negotiation.
That's correct.
So what's wrong with that?
As far as we sit here today, I mean, there might be no ramifications, but-
There may very well be no ramifications on it, and it could be perfectly fine.
Or hypothesizing.
However, or worst-case scenario, is that someone comes back, that challenges it, and says, "That's not consistent with the adopted regional transportation plan and others," and starts looking and scrutinizing the environmental document further, and having to do more environmental analysis, which would put more expense on the applicant to potentially, that's potential, that's just saying that that's just out there, it's not saying that that's what's going to happen, but that's potential.
Well, Neil, real quickly too, this is from Caltrans, and this is a recommendation from Caltrans that we do this. But usually Caltrans says of their own volition, that this is our ultimate right-of-way that we would like to have, but they're citing our own RTP in this case. So, I mean, there's also potential ramifications from Caltrans, hiding by their rules. So, again, this is a recommendation by Caltrans, and we are putting it in our conditions of approval.
I believe it's setting a very dangerous precedent for property owners and property rights, and that's why I am making this point. In the words of Mr. Bach, it's only 25 feet. And if it's only 25 feet, why can't Caltrans go through the normal right-of-way acquisition procedure to obtain the right-of-way when and if it is necessary? We don't know when that is going to be at this point. Mr. Bach was vague on the date, listed as 2038. And whoever is designating this width has no design, has no specific engineered drawing that says 25 feet is required to widen the highway. So this is a very ambiguous request, that very likely in the future, even if we make the offer, will probably never even come about, at least in this specific configuration that's being requested today. So I say, let's wait for Caltrans to go through their normal right-of-way acquisition procedures. All of our design has been set back off the highway to accommodate future widening, and it should be appropriated at that particular point in time.
Thank you.
All the parcels that are adjacent to Highway 99, other than yours, that are owners in place, they're not being approached by Caltrans, right? Because nothing-
No, not at this time, unless a project is-
I'm just making a point here.
It's only the time of development.
So if they decide to put a highway in 20 years from now, they'll have to come to each homeowner, or property owner, and say, you know, here's what we want, and here's-
We want to give you X amount of dollars for so many square feet of your ground, and, you know, let's get this done.
Right, so they'd have a multiple negotiation on their hands.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, we have TCAG for a reason, and I think they supersede on this, and that we are setting a precedent, but it's already been set. It's been set by TCAG.
The state of California requires the nexus, the connection between the property development request and the request for the condition of approval. And the state of California supersedes any request of TCAG at this particular point in time. There has to be a connection between the development request and the condition of
I just think we should go along with what TCAG-
What are they saying?
They're saying, set that back along there when a project comes up. That's in the regional-
They're saying, put that statement in here?
Right, that's the regional transportation plan, that's why the condition's in there.
It's in the plan, they're not saying, put that in, it is their plan. It's TCAG's plan.
Okay, but it doesn't have to be in the plan, for approval.
Well, this condition is in there because of-
No, but if we take it out, it's not going to do anything to anyone.
It's going against the plan.
It's going against TCAG's plan.
TCAG's plan.
Right.
But the state supersedes all that anyway, right?
Well-
I would agree with TCAG. I would agree that Highway 99 needs to be widened. But I disagree on the method of how to do it, and particularly in this instance, requiring an irrevocable offer to do it. If TCAG wants 25 feet, let's pay for it now.
But that's what long-range planning is, and you know that. It's not, you're not going to pay anything more for it, you're going to prepare for it in case it happens. That's like in three hours.
Show me the plan that designates the 25-foot widening.
Well, not in the regional plan?
Yeah, here, and we're at a very philosophical level of discussion here, when we're trying to get a project approved. A couple of options that I might put out there. One is, we could put a timing on this that say, if, after so many years, by 2038, if that road hadn't gone through, that that's removed, the offer is there, but the actual dedication is not there, as a condition, knowing that. Or to the state that the widening, future widening is noted, that as a condition of approval, all improvements are outside of the right-of-way, and that they'll negotiate in good faith at some time in the future. Whatever, however, we could look at those different ways of doing it. This isn't a controversial project, it's very supportive. If this was a controversial project, this is exactly where some, an opponent would dig into it and hit it hard. But because this is not controversial, that everybody likes it, that we're not, so chances are that we would be able to be okay with this, and it would suffice. So I'd leave that as the option, the question of the planning commission.
You know, I'm a property rights guy, but I've got a little bit of an issue here, because we can probably get away with this one just fine, but what's going to happen when the next one comes, and the one after that, and we do the same type of thing, and we pull this requirement for dedication out of the conditions of approval, and Caltrans comes back and says, "Listen, you're not even following your own TCAG policies here, and we're, you know, and they're going to mess up all the rest of them. This one might get through, but the others, everyone's going to be an issue."
That was the first consideration, that if it doesn't get built by 2038, that it doesn't, won't happen.
Oh, okay.
I think it's, you know, that's what TCAG is for, it's represented by every part of the county. And I think we just got to take that into consideration.
The other point would be, again, Neil's representing, standing in representation of the property owner, and maybe we'd like to see if Alfonso, what his opinion of, because it's his project, not Neil's.
Neil is his representative, so.
Well, if, well, that's true. Is he speaking for you, Alfonso? I mean-
Thank you, Neil.
I should say-
Excuse me, could you please, no, please come up to the speaker and give your name and address again. Thank you.
Neil could say.
My name is Jose Alfonso Lago Vazquez, and my address is 1814 Rothschild Street, Tulare, here in California. I should say, I am knowledgeable about the topic. Then I, my statements will not be accurate, and will not, I really don't know what is right and what is not right in here. I know I want this project approval, approved, right, because we need to move forward to get this. I also, like everybody, if I can have 20 more feet of property, I want it, right? Do I know, then I let Neil and other professionals, like all of you, to discuss and come to the decision that has to be made, because I really don't have the knowledge to have a qualified opinion about this.
Thank you.
I would just like to respond to the commissioners. Again, an informational statement as part of the approval, identifying the potential widening of State Route 99, I think is entirely appropriate. I think this consideration, and in no way do I want to jeopardize the project for the sake of this argument, again, I believe it's setting a very dangerous precedence and infringing on individual property rights very significantly. And the reason for that, whether it's a TCAG directive or policy, as you travel along Highway 99, all parcels are not 10 acres, 15 acres, and so on. You, if you go further south, and you travel into Pixley and Early Mart and Teviston, there's many, many very small parcels that are adjacent to State Route 99. And as soon as that first mini-mart comes in with a development application, are you going to require this same irrevocable offer of them that will potentially, you know, destroy their use? And I'm not sure that that's going to happen. I think it's convenient to request an irrevocable offer off of a large acreage parcel, but I'm not sure the same application is going to be made to that same mom-and-pop grocery store, or that residence that wants to add a fourth bedroom that has to, happens to be adjacent to the highway. So I think we're, I think this is a significant thing that needs to be considered in this case. Yes, the highway does have to be widened, and yes, when that happens, it's going to have a significant effect on many, many property owners along this route. As far as obtaining these irrevocable offers, and not requiring it of this particular application, which a couple of members have mentioned concern over, I think the percentage of properties that are going to end up giving an irrevocable offer because of this directive of TCAG is very, very small, compared to the number of properties that will have to be approached for a traditional right-of-way acquisition and negotiation.
That was my point.
Very few, a very small percentage, are actually ever going to make the irrevocable offer along this route. So I believe it would be inconsequential to not require this condition at this time.
Thank you. Could I ask one question? Is this condition only for the east side of the freeway, or are they going to request that for both sides of the freeway?
On the plans, I don't know where, I personally don't know where the plans lie on that, but again, it will be in the fut, it'll be in the future, as projects seem, so if a project was developed on the west side as well, Caltrans and TCAG, however that project fits, I do not know the answer about the alignment at that-
Well, we were just talking about TCAG's plan.
Right, and I don't know the alignment at that spot, whether it's, whether the width is all going to do-
Because most times on a freeway, it's both.
Actually, it's split equal.
It's both, yes, it's split.
But there's considerations.
Is this Caltrans condition a new insertion into all the future?
Well, what I was gonna-
First time I've heard of this.
What I was going to ask is that, I believe the White River Plaza on Avenue 56, adjacent to 99, I think when we did the parcel map for that, the accommodations were made for the ultimate right-of-way of the 99 there, that's where we put the Dollar General and the AutoZone-
That's what I was going to ask you, did we do that?
On that parcel map, we did for their future on-ramp and-
But was there an irrevocable?
I believe so. I'd have to double-check, but I believe so.
And so I would assume that with the AMPM that's right there between Tipton and Pixley, because they're right up against the freeway themselves.
Well, see, it depends, too, because that one, I believe, was zoned properly, so there was no discretionary permitting where it comes to the planning commission, where there's a review for Caltrans, that's strictly allowed to do building permits. So if on the same parcel right now, if they were just putting an agricultural pull barn in or something like that, it would never get to the point where this is, it's when it gets to the level of a discretionary approval, that's when this types of-
It comes to us. I was going to ask about Dollar General, that's what I was, that I see now, so-
Well, Dollar General and Tipton, they had to accommodate as well, and I would have to look back on that to see, they had to step back because of a future off-ramp potential there.
So it's been here, we just haven't seen it, because it's never been raised by anyone other than Neil.
That's, that was my question, so it has been.
Is that a correct assumption?
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, I think also, we have to look at each as a case-by-case. In this particular project, we're not making an impact to the applicant or the project.
Actually, actually, your board, or your commission, this morning did one for the Emory Poplar Group. We did a Caltrans, and for the county on- We did a Caltrans and for the county on, on Road 192 and the Highway 190. So.
It just was not contested.
Yeah, it just didn't have.
Is that an irrevocable offer or was that a dedication?
I'm sorry, a dedication of right of way.
Dedication of right of way.
That's completely different.
It is a different completely, except for the nexus factor that would be for.
There's a direct connection. There's a direct connection.
Between the, the project and.
Yes, absolutely.
Even though we have no immediate, immediate access off of State Road there. Not necessarily. So the, the. Point is that if TCAG and Caltrans ultimately know the ultimate right of way here is eight lanes, and although it's not at the PSNE level where we have specifications or engineer designs, it's still at a point where, um, they know the absolute width and that's why, why they're asking that. So this project is being laid upon a plan, a concept report that's already in place. And so that's where it's.
That's your nexus.
It's within your discretion as to whether to absolutely require this. But it's our recommendation at this point. Irrevocable offer of dedication.
Calling me here. Phone's ringing.
It's Caltrans, yeah.
May I add just a couple of things, Hector Garrett, Chief of Environmental Fire? Uh, there is a real risk that when we do these projects, Caltrans will then find out, oh, they didn't take our, our comments seriously and they did not, uh, give us that offer of dedication that we're talking about. And then they will, of course, say it was the 2014 TCAG, which Caltrans sits as a board member and a voting member, uh, that said, in your 2014 plan, you, we know that State Route 99 is going to go from probably center line, you know, from four lanes on each, to eight, or six lanes each way, um, or three lanes north, three lanes south. So that was evaluated, that was considered. And, and the environmental document was per such. It indicated, okay, when that eventually happens, this is what we're going to need to get. And, uh, the environmental determination for transportation traffic component was indicated there that this is going to happen over time. And typically, the new development gets hit that way, just like with the White River Plaza project was a perfect example for that. And even this other project we just approved, Amory, or this, uh, project, it, it didn't require a nexus. You know, Caltrans says, we're going to need that. And the owner was like, okay, I need my project. I'm, I'm going to do it. And, and yeah, there's, there's going to be a, a dedication, you know. Over time, and, and, and as a sidebar, a lot of times freeways as they're constructed, I know I live in Fresno and they, they make these rights of way really wide. But they typically leave the center line pretty wide there. That's where the new lane's going to go. And that saves taxpayers a lot of money, eliminates delay, it accelerates construction-related activities, and it really brings costs down because acquisition and environmental and all that goes, that goes with it. To plow through where development already is, is very expensive and, and could lead to a lot of delays. So I appreciate property rights as much as anybody does, but the TCAG board has spoken with its environmental document. And then, and then right now, Caltrans is piggybacked off of that. And to not do what they're going to do, I think it, it risks going from our cat-exempt to a, a higher level document. And I, I don't know if the applicant wants to risk that and delay that could go with it. Because when everything's said and done here, Caltrans will be notified what we've done. And I'm just, I don't know how they're going to react to it.
And not only this one, the next one that comes through is going to be a higher category document. And it's going to cost everybody that wants to do this a lot, lot more money.
Well, think of driving 99 25 years ago. There wasn't one part of it we didn't want widened. So I mean, it's all going to be widened. Is there an option to, um, to go back to Caltrans and, and, and adjust what they're requesting? That is not an irrevocable? Yeah, if you want to take some more time.
We, we, we can, we could go forward and negotiate with Caltrans on this and try to see what we can do.
And what's that delay?
We, we don't, well, you, you never know when you're dealing with this Caltrans, so.
Because I don't think they're arguing the dedication. It's just whether it's irrevocable or not, the irrevocable offer, right? Am I correct in that?
We, we will support the dedication of, of right of way and the normal acquisition to widen State Route 99 in the future. We just believe that, uh, 25 feet on an irrevocable offer today is, is inappropriate. There's no connection, uh, to require that condition of approval, regardless of what is a, a concept plan or not. This project does not require the widening of Highway 99, period. As a matter of clarification, no matter what, uh, the commission decides this morning, I would like clarification as to the condition. Is this 25 feet required only across the parcel that is, uh, has applied for the use permit for the dairy facility? Or is it required across the entire frontage of the parcel, which, uh, I believe is, is over 10 acres in size? Can staff answer that question? I don't believe the condition is clear.
That 25 foot down the full frontage, you're saying is, is about 10 acres of property that they're asking him to give, give away?
No. The total size of the property is actually almost 12 acres. Uh, and it's, it's over, um, well, I don't know how this condition would work because the southern portion of the property is actually the on-ramp. So I don't know where the 25 foot would, would start and stop. That's why I'm asking for clarification. Uh, the dairy, uh, research facility is only proposed on the northern half of the parcel. So is the 25 foot required, uh, to be offered on parcel one, or is it required to be offered on parcel two?
Well, it should be just where the project is. And if another project comes up on the other one, we can talk about that one. The way it should be worked.
And that's the way, that's the way, and we can clarify, that's the way it's meant.
Caltrans correspondence was with regard to the special use permit.
It's only on the north parcel.
Only on that one parcel.
Not the southern parcel.
If the, if the commission decides to, uh, leave this condition of approval, as it stands, I would request that it be reworded, uh, to provide that clarification.
I'm ready to move.
I, I was just going to say if.
I was going to say, we, we could, we could leave it as just a dedication and then we would continue, that's appropriate.
Dedication of right of way.
Just a dedication of right of way and not irrevocable offer. And we'll just put it, and we'll, we'll negotiate with, with.
That's a good compromise.
Here, here, that's, that's what we should do.
Uh, the dedication, no, we cannot agree to that. The dedication of right of way has not been, we don't even know if it's, it's been designed or established. We have no idea if 25 feet is even the appropriate width. It may even only be 12 feet. It may only be six feet. It may not even be in this location. We don't know.
I'm, I'm ready to vote, ma'am.
Thank you. I would like to hear from the planning commission themselves. Are we ready to look at this and vote? Or do you have any more questions?
Neil, how about not to exceed 25 feet?
As an irrevocable offer?
Yeah. No, 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 no. In the, in the dedication.
Uh, the condition now reads, unless I'm mistaken, as an irrevocable offer.
Irrevocable, uh, to account of 25 feet. If we take the word irrevocable out and, and make it a dedication, not to exceed 25 feet. Because you just said, we don't know how, how big it's going to be if we just dedicate it at this point. You, you don't want an open-ended dedication on a, on a, on a dimension you don't know.
Well, and we also don't want to give away property that we don't, we don't know that will ever be used for a highway. So to make a dedication, an actual granting of our property away to Caltrans at this point in time, I'm not even sure they would accept it because they don't, they wouldn't know what to do with it.
Well, might I suggest.
And it becomes their liability. That's the purpose for the irrevocable portion of the dedication.
Right.
Is because they do not want to accept responsibility or liability for that ground once it's dedicated. And they don't want to maintain it.
I think we should, um, I mean, I'd like to suggest that we keep the wording the way it is for parcel, for the north part of the parcel only, and keep it irrevocable at 25 feet in keeping with the TCAG regional plan. I think, and then you have a project right today.
And be limited to parcel, uh, parcel one, which attaches to the.
The one where the project is.
John, make a motion.
I'll make that motion. I just want to make sure that the condition is clear on that for parcel one.
It's only to parcel one.
Okay. I'd like to make that motion for approval.
Ask the chairwoman.
I'm sorry.
May Mr. Lago make a comment?
Yes, he may. Yes, we've gone around this long enough. So yes, please.
Jose Alfonso Lago Vasquez, 1814 Rothschild Street, Tulare, California. Um, as I mentioned before, I, my, my opinions about the topic are, are not qualified because I don't know the topic. But, uh, I just, um, there was two things that raised here, one by Mr. Millis, not to sit. I think that, that makes sense, right? The other was to take the irrevocable part of it. That, that everybody will agree on that or, or, or not? Is that something that, are, are we taking the irrevocable part?
That opens another can of worms.
Okay.
I, I don't think Neil agreed to that.
No. And that would.
I don't think Neil agreed to taking that off.
Because that, that does dedicate the property to them and they don't want the property right now, right? Is that what I gained?
Oh, okay.
Neil may be correct in that, and that's why we're offering to further discuss in good faith with Caltrans whether they would take it. But it puts the onus back on Caltrans, whether to take it or not. And if they would refuse it at that point, it'd be easier for us to get rid of the requirement entirely. But Neil doesn't want to do that. So I think you just leave the irrevocable offer on it for.
For right now, on parcel one.
I, I probably, probably the problem is I didn't understand what is irrevocable offer. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very confusing to all of us also, Mr. Lago.
And we want to simplify the process.
We want this to go through. So John, do you want to make the motion?
So we're closed on the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm going to close the public hearing.
For parcel one only, right?
So now you're going to make the motion?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion on approval of special use permit PSP 15-49. Senator Parcel Map for Jose. And, um, we can, we keep that condition as it's written on the irrevocable part of this, on the northern parcel, parcel one.
I'll second that motion.
Only.
Thank you. The vote?
John?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
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 Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villiano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, now we have another motion? We have a motion?
Make that motion. We approve the category exemption consistent with the California CECL and State CECL guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structure and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 15041, and waiver of a final map.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
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 Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villiano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, motions one and two have been approved. Mr. Zerling?
Yes, I'm sorry to belabor this, but condition number three of the parcel map portion of this reads exactly the same as condition number 26 of the use permit. So I would like some consistency here. Uh, I don't know now if this condition applies only to the parcel map.
It does. I'm going to insert for parcel one right here.
This is the parcel map?
This is the parcel map reservation.
I didn't hear that approved though.
That was my, that was my understanding as a planning commissioner.
I think I heard John say.
Yes, he did. Parcel one.
But it is.
Parcel one.
On the use permit, but the, the tentative parcel map will read the same. And that is my understanding and that's the way the commission understands it.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I have to recuse myself on the next one, but I'd like to talk to Mr. Lago. And it's nothing clandestine on the board of the children's museum and where we can get his help on, uh, helping for the children's museum. Is that okay, ma'am?
Well, I guess so.
What is it? Well, there's a memo.
Mr., make it note that Mr. Bill Whitlatch is accusing himself from items for discussion and review, and that's number 6A, special use permit number PSP 13-017, Willetts Equipment Company. And is this going to be Dana, please, a presentation again?
Yes, I don't have a presentation. I think you all recall the Willetts Equipment Company and one of the neighbors that filed numerous complaints at the time that the original use permit was approved. And so at that time, we required that they do a monthly report for emergency visits to the site. And because there were a couple more calls of complaints during the 2014 year, we extended that requirement of monthly reports for one more year. And that year expired, actually, November 30th. So I'm coming back to your commission and ask your permission if we can eliminate condition number three, which would no longer require Willetts Equipment Company to submit that monthly emergency report of visitations to the site.
And there were no more complaints in 15?
There have not been any complaints for the year 2015.
You mean about it?
No.
Unless Mr. Zerling is representing them too.
No touching that. Does, as the planning commission, does anyone have any comments on this?
Sounds like they're getting along.
Sounds like we can have one thing we can feel good about.
Yes. And that was our requirement and that has been fulfilled.
That has been fulfilled.
Do we need to vote on that?
Take a vote.
Okay.
There is a minute order resolution, yes, for your.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'd make the motion that we allow the monthly reporting period to cease.
I'll second.
We have a vote, please?
John?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
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 Villiano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, and could, thank you very much, Dana. Director's report, planning director update?
Great, thank you. Um, I'd just like to, uh, inform the commission that the RMA, Port of Supervisors appointed Ben Ruiz as the new RMA director, interim director. And he will be probably no longer attending our regular meetings. In his stead is Reed Shanky. He is our chief engineer with Public Works. And he'll, he'll do an outstanding job and he'll be the representative from Public Works for the planning commission. Uh, I'd just like to follow up on one of, one of the things that you said with, uh, respect to TOT collection. I spoke with, uh, the tax collector auditor yesterday after the board meeting to invite her to come to a planning commission meeting to make a short presentation regarding, um, their efforts and their successes and, and whatnot regarding TOT tax on, on those things, such as vacation rentals by owners and Airbnb and those types of things. So I, I, she, she acted as if she was open for that. Uh, so I've just put out an invitation for either, um, the end of January or the end of February, the next two meetings to see what would work best with her schedule for her to come and do a brief presentation.
Thank you.
And McDonald's has started construction. You haven't, you didn't mention that.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
McDonald's started construction.
McDonald's has, yes, broken ground and started construction. Uh, we, um, would look forward to that. The community, Early Mart's really excited about having McDonald's there. Uh, we just issued building permits for, uh, an organic, uh, feed mill component to the Foster Farms facility up in, in, um, Traver. up in, in Traver. It's, it was just a minor modification inside, but it's minor in, in impact land use piece, but it's, it's a major investment of about $17 million of a standalone area where they're doing organic feed for organic chickens. So that's, that's a nice one. That we've also issued building permits for the large solar scale projects, the Con Ed projects down by Ducor that, when it came to the commission, they were known as the Vestal Projects. Those are all, grading is underway, the substations are, are being constructed, and the permits are being, have been issued for the solar fields themselves. So that's going to be, the next nine months, there's going to be a hotbed of activity down there as far as the construction of those, as well as the Tulare Solar Center, which is just a few miles further south. They'll all be under construction at the same time, and this has required us to actually shift some of our building inspectors to be based out of Porterville because they're, they're going to be there so often for the next few months during that construction. We're also going to be bringing to, to the, your commission the Highway 99 Sustainable Highway Corridor Plan. It kind of ties in with all of, all of our community planning efforts, our complete streets, some policies about Highway 99 as far as ag protection between the communities, all of those types of things. So that, that would be coming up at the end of this month, on the final meeting in the month. I'd also like to just take a moment, unfortunately Neil decided to leave. I, I wanted to say that we like, like yesterday, we went up to, to talk to the homeowners association for, for Dollar General and, and get input back and forth. And, you know, we, we like to do this early on instead of having it at the podium. Because this, this issue was never brought up back to us. There was never, until he's, he came up to the podium, we'd like to work those things out ahead of time, and then we can try to figure out and get more in depth because you can't do any in-depth analysis, research, or communication at the podium, at the podium stage. And, and, and we, we always encourage that communication back and forth, but we really didn't have any of that communication until it was presented before your, your commission today. So unfortunately, we weren't as prepared as we could have been, or if there could have been other alternatives or other solutions. It's just, to be dumped at the podium is, is a challenge, so.
I think the wise thing you did, and you recommended this to us, is not throw it back to Caltrans because then they wouldn't have a project, at least for unknown time of, who knows when it would be. So I think that was smart.
Well, and again, the, the, when you're dealing with, and, and I'm a property rights kind of guy, and, but there's, there's public projects that are bigger scale than everybody, and the issue really comes up is, is when there's development projects that, that, as part of the discretion, as part of a business decision, the right of way, the right of way with was known on this property before this, before this came forward. It was already known. Because a few years ago, there had been a proposed project from the actual owner of the land who sold it to Alfonso. He knew the right of way with there. So when that, when he was proposing a project there, they were asking for, for it there. So it's not an unknown. So therefore, that's part of the cost of, you know, when, when the cost of how much am I going to pay for this land, you should know that there's a right of way that's going to be required, so I'm paying this, knowing that there's going to be 25 feet of area that I'm not going to be building out into that is required for this future project. So it's all a cost of doing business and, and...
Oh, I'm sorry, man. I was just going to, is, is that, was that, was that 25-foot dedication or requirement recorded on a...
It'll be on the, it'll be on the condition.
The preliminary title report?
Ultimately, yeah, it will be.
No, maybe, not ultimately. When the guy goes to buy a piece of property, is that on the title report? Is it?
Well, no, as far, as far as him buying it now, no, because see, this property wasn't in the configuration that it is now until you approve the map, because he's only buying the one parcel.
And the offer of dedication goes with the, the project. He was talking about nexus. Caltrans would not be able to just randomly apply this on the properties. It's this process that would go through, the entitlement process, that raises up the, the nexus issue because they, they, they could buy, they could take, but as in exchange for the approval of this project, they are going to offer that dedication. It's not, it's not, it's not on title.
It's not on title. So in other words, a buyer comes up, does not have this information unless the, unless maybe the seller closes it. Sometimes they don't, or the broker doesn't, or doesn't know. And he's paid, what's 25 feet times? I looked, I don't have my glasses, and it was little numbers, but it looked like about 3,400 feet. Who's got a calculator?
What's on your phone?
He can't see.
That's it.
So, and, so the guy comes up, and I know when this was on the market, and they wanted $28,000 an acre for it.
Yes.
How many acres is it? Divide by four, three, five? Eighty-five thousand square feet. Four, divide by four, three, five, six, oh.
1.95 acres.
Couple acres.
Couple acres.
1.95 acres?
Oh.
1.95? Okay. Almost two acres. Two acres, all right. Well, that's, that, that's not going to, you know, he, he paid for something he can't use there, but that's part of the deal. If it had been 10 or 12 acres, I'm going to say, you know what, he, you know, he paid 300,000 or 30,000 bucks, or, you know, 300,000 for something he can't use. So, and then didn't know it ahead of time going into this deal. Was it disclosed to him?
No, it was, well, it was disclosed to Alfonso. When we looked, we, we, we went around with Alfonso and looked at a number of sites.
Right.
All over.
Right.
And we did mention that there was a 25-foot right of way that it's going to be.
And he was fortunate to have you do that for him and to be honest enough to tell him upfront. That, that doesn't happen everywhere.
And again, that, that, this is just for his site, not the entirety of the property. So the property of the South, if they want to, if they want to come in and put some ag buildings on there or something, this won't take into effect. It's when there's a discretionary decision that the planning commissioner, the board of supervisors is taking on that matter, that's when it comes into play, and that's when Caltrans. When we have projects, you know, we're looking at Caldwell 99, a big project out there. That development is giving right of way for Caldwell, and it's, and it's, and it's having to account for the, the ultimate right of way of the new interchange for Caldwell 99. So that's all part of, this is, yes, this is a much smaller scale, it's a small thing, but it's the same concept.
That's how planning gets done, right there.
Does anybody else have any? Aaron? Thank you.
My name is Reed Shanky. I'm chief engineer, been with the county for...
Reed, Reed?
R-E-D.
Reed, again, last... Okay.
Yeah.
He's already listed on your blue sheet there.
Yes, he's on the blue sheet.
I don't do no good. I can't see him today. Thank you very much.
My direct number is 624-7142, so I'm happy to, if you have any questions at other times, I'm happy to help out there. Probably the first thing on your mind is that we're all pretty excited about is the recent storms. We've had some typical roadside flooding, ponding, nothing that we can't handle with the roads crews and with the, the county forces there. We are starting to see a bit of flow in the rivers and streams throughout the county, which we're all excited about. They're releasing water from both Kuya and Success reservoirs, so that's good news. They feel comfortable that the, there's going to be enough weather coming forward to provide some storage for that flood, flooding capacity. In other fields, we've got a couple parks projects that we're excited about that are currently out to bid. A new park in Plainview, it's a smaller, about an acre or so parcel, that'll be developed into a park. And then some improvements in Peter Malik Park in Goshen and Leadbetter Park in Cutler, some place structures and irrigation improvements out there. Those will be happening here in the spring, probably be constructed around May or June, finished construction. One of the big bridges that we're doing is the Deer Creek Bridge. That'll be a, we're doing a big concrete pour next week, so it's coming together quite, quite well, and we're excited to work around the water on that one because there is water flowing underneath it. But they're up and out of the way, so we don't assume there, or we don't believe there'll be any issues with that. We finished a number of road overlays in the fall here. We're doing notice of completions on that, kind of variously located throughout the county, some pavement work. On the transit side, one of our big projects that we're pushing forward is the Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility, and we are working with a consultant or to get a consultant on board to finish the design on that one. And hopefully, we'll have that wrapped up here in the summer, fall, and be able to go forward with construction on that soon thereafter. So that's a, a big project for the transit facility. We currently share operations with the City of Isalia's Transit System, and we're looking to set up our own facility out there. So that's an exciting project for us. Avenue 416, a road widening project up between Dinuba and Fresno County lines. We finished the bridge out there a few years back, and now we're looking to finish the four, four-lane widening. So that'll be going into construction here in the summer, but prior to that, we'll do some clearing and grubbing and some utility relocation. So probably within the next two weeks or so, we'll start seeing activity along Avenue 416 in that area. And then the high-speed rail, not too long ago, we reached some agreements and came to contracts with the High Speed Rail Authority, and they will be kind of ancillary to the actual rail alignment, improving a number of county roadways and bridges. That's a design-build contract, so we're working with the contractor right now, and they're anxious to move forward. So probably come spring, we'll start to see some activities out there with those road improvements that are associated to the high-speed rail project.
But, oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's all I've got.
Are you through? Just a question, Reed. Any, any, any further discussions with, with the city and, and Southern Cal Edison about the widening of Shirk Road, North, Shirk Road, on how that might go and removing those poles and...
I, I'm not familiar with that particular. I know we have been working with Edison on the 280 widening. So at that intersection of Shirk, there's some readjustments there, but I can look into particularly the Shirk issue and get back to that.
Yeah, I think that what's been slowing the whole thing down is moving those, those big poles, because those are, the, the top ones are real high, high tension, and, and my understanding is it's, it's prohibitive to put that underground. Bill knows better than anybody because he, his, his project is on South Shirk right there. Yeah, Bill Whitlatch, 525 West Center. Anyway, my project, which is south of 198 on Shirk Road, has had the poles in the, in the road for five years, and Edison has found the money to move those, and so that's going to happen real soon. North of 198, I, I don't know what's going on with that, but there's something going on. And Ed, if you want to call me later on, I'll give you the name of the person who can tell you exactly what's going on at Edison.
Fix me. I live on Shirk Road where the horse ranch is, oh, right over here.
You have to recuse yourself on this.
Well, I will, but I'd like to know what's coming down the road.
Reed, I have a, I have a, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question for you. It seems like since it has rained considerable amount, the potholes have gotten so much worse than even as bad as they were before. So is it because the material was not, could not withstand rain, and we haven't had rain for so long like that? It, it just seems to be dissolving. That's the only way I can describe it.
Basically, you're right. That water gets underneath the foundation of the asphalt, and then as you get vehicles moving across it, it kind of loosens it up.
Terrible, terrible. 120 in Tipton.
120? I'll jot it down.
Bill, don't leave, by the way.
I'm not leaving.
When do you anticipate them completing that road?
That'll, so the, the first, what you'll see as activities out there is clearing and grubbing of some of the farm properties that we've acquired. So we've acquired all the properties at this point that we need, and we'll see that probably within, hopefully two weeks or so, starting. And then we'll see some utility relocations coming in after that. The meat of the construction will probably begin in the fall, and then that'll be about a one-year project to, to complete, so roughly fall of 2017.
My, my concern, because I drive out every day, is, is, is the, when it gets foggy, and they have those little small bulges that you have to kind of go around, pie on, and that's my real big concern.
Definitely the, the traffic control and the staging for that is, is a concern and issue. And what we most likely will be looking at doing is building out the new lanes for the new location, then adjusting traffic over to that and switching back. But you're right, there will be some shifting of lanes through there. And the, the consideration of fog, dark traffic, rainy traffic, so the operations throughout the winter is a concern, and we, you know, we make sure to follow MUTCD standards and make sure that the contractor is putting out the right cones and signage to, to handle that treatment.
That's why I have all this gray hair.
Just a quick point of interest. It's not in our jurisdiction, but I noticed that the bridge over the, by Sayea Park, by Sayea Parkway over Packwood Creek is completed and done, so.
Yep.
And I, and of course, I go over to Shirk Road, and it's a shot for me.
Isn't that wonderful? That's a great, great project. That was a nice project.
That's my route.
And it was fast. It was very fast.
Well, it goes, well, it goes all the way to Shirk.
Okay, thank you.
My question, oh, right there on would be acres, where the Parkway kind of comes to a stop there. Steve Whitten's old shop and everything right there where that big house is, there's a, there's a jog in the road by about 20 feet.
Mm-hmm.
How are they going to handle that without taking out Steve's house and his shop and everything else?
Right of way, they'll, they'll acquire the right of way and condemn it?
They had an irrevocable one.
That's what I was going to say. On, on 416, I believe there's been a couple projects here, packaging and some others, that as part of the condition for the approval of their use permit, they gave, so that...
They did give it.
...gorge when we did on Caldwell as well. We, they did it for the City of Isaya for a road that's not even there yet, but for future, if Robin comes through, that they've offered for that. And that's where we put a delay on it for a certain time thing, saying if, if, if it's, if the city doesn't do it in 50 years or whatever it was, then yeah, it's, it's not going to be there, you know?
And right in front of your house, Nancy, was it across the street there, Kajigian? He, he came in here and wanted a stoplight there, remember?
Yes.
He was going to dedicate the property right there where his trees are so that they could straighten the road out.
They have lights there now.
What's up, John?
Mr. Bach, do you have anything to add?
But I would like to add that the environmental division and the planning division did do the permitting for Route 416 to allow it to happen.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other? Okay, yes.
Rachel, I like the school class. Victor Garrett, chief environmental planner. Good news. We've hired a planner for, to fill, finally have 100% of my division fully staffed. He will begin work in two weeks, so whatever that is, the 24th or 28th or whatever day that is. So I hope to bring him to the next planning commission where he can make a quick introduction. So he's a recent graduate of Cal Poly, has his master's...
Public administration.
Public administration. And he has a undergrad degree in speech communications, so obviously as the interviewer, he can articulate very well, and he can write very well, so that's going to be real beneficial. But his, his area of expertise is going to be in water resources, and that area that we're going to be looking for, his help is, is a plan and policy development for water that's mandated by the State of California's Water Management Plans that are required by every county. So Tulare County being one of two counties that is almost always in draft. He's going to be a real instrumental in helping us put that plan together, so that's going to be great. He's, he's a resident of, of... Timothy Bailey, so he will be starting shortly, and I'm real excited to have him on board.
Great.
We'll make the introduction when he...
And see, that's exactly when someone said today that three of us is unique, I guess it was Bill. This is what, I mean, we have the most PhDs per capita and planners and professional people of anywhere, so.
But he's a transplant. He came from New York, so he just fell in love with the region. He used to work for like the Forest Service or Park Service.
He'll fit right in up there.
Yes, he will. We're excited to have a local person, if you will, now a transplant, be able to work for us.
That's great.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I won't forget you next time. Mr. Whitlatch, do you have something to say?
Well, Mr. Lago wanted to say something to the commission, and so I told him to come up and...
No, no. I just wanted to say thank you for, for all the work you put on this. It's all that I need. Thank you all.
Very welcome.
Good luck.
Welcome. It's a perfect spot.
I want to add one thing about the storms, too. When I said here, it's because my desktop or my laptop had fired up, and my picture on there is Sunday when my wife and I were standing on the top of Morrel Rock. And Morrel Rock has about five feet of snow on the backside where the railings are, so the snow's right up to the railing. It's not recommended to go, but I can tell you, if we got a warm rain right now, what's in Giant Forest, we would have the same incident as what we had on January 2nd, 1997. And that was about a 45-year... And that was about a forty-five-year incident. So, got a good start, real good start. Got a lot of good smoke there.
Thank you. I adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, we're going to do, so there's three of us here that are marking our tenth year on the commission. We're going to do a group photo, and we're going to put it in the newspaper.
What do you want to do?